Call this meeting to order and I ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to July 5th, 2022 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones if you needed listening device. I'm not sure how that works in this building, but I would tell you to talk to Carol who's sitting over this way. The meeting documents are, I don't see those either, way over here on that desk or that counter. And if you plan to speak at public comment, if you would please make sure you sign in with your name and address on the platform or the podium over there. And consent agenda removal. I'm confused. Oh, is there any reason Commissioner Benega is going to, Bender, excuse me, is going to recuse herself for consent agenda, correct? Okay. And then one more thing, I would like to thank again the City of Sioux Falls for loaning us their facilities as we are under construction at Minnehaha County Commission Office. So with that, I would look for a motion to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda. I have a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Karski.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with Commissioner Bender recusing herself. Roll call vault, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hyberger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously with one abstention. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. If there is anyone here that would like to speak to anything that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity. And you get five minutes. I don't know who's doing our clock.
My name is Clark Meyer, President of Knife River, South Dakota. Our business address is 1500 North Sweetman Place. On today's agenda, you have a consideration of a contract with Charles Smith for the architecture and planning of the WH line fairgrounds. This appears to be a continued action from Resolution 2211, which you passed during the January meeting earlier this year. As a reminder, that resolution was, and I quote, "to authorize a task force for the purpose of reviewing and establishing a vision for the William H. Line Fairgrounds." A task force group, including some of today's consultants, went through a very similar exercise in 1999, and they concluded that the fair needed $31 million in capital expenditures to upgrade the facilities. But they also had no solution for the source of those funds, and it also struggled to develop an operating business model that made the fair self-sustaining and no longer continually dependent on county subsidies as it is today. We have learned during this year's Task Force initial two-day workshop, the group of selected volunteers were given a very narrow and restricted scope in exploring all options and opportunities for the future of the fair. They have been directed that only solutions that include the fair remaining on the existing grounds will be explored and considered. The reasoning shared behind this directive was the county has reservations about their ability to sell the property. Knife River believes that a state bill passed in 2005 and is now South Dakota Codified Law 432518 through 432518.5 outlines the process that, when followed, would allow the county to sell this property. Knife River currently borders the fairgrounds on three sides, and those surrounding properties are an active mine. We believe that under the fairgrounds is a large deposit of high-quality construction aggregates. We have requested access to verify these reserves, but have been denied. I have recently sent all of you correspondence, of which I will paraphrase here. Knife River hereby offers Minnehaha County $65 million for the property known as the WH line fairgrounds. More details and conditions are spelled out in the memo received, but just for a point of reference, an appraisal done in November of 2020 valued the property at 6.5 million, and the county director of equalization has the property listed at 6.9 million. This offer is intended to kickstart the conversation and have the task force study all options, including relocating the fair and leveraging the largest asset the county or the fairgrounds has, which is the aggregate reserves it allegedly sits on. Knife River is not only interested in saving the fair, we are passionate about creating a modern, state-of-the-art agritourism facilities with a long-term, fiscally responsible and sustainable plan that will benefit the entire Sioux empire and yet continue the legacy of the Lyon family. I would summarize with this, we shouldn't settle for an easy out that leaves the job for someone else later. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who has a public comment at this point? Good morning.
Good morning. Warren Guidi from Hartford. I want to thank you, Mr. Karski, for taking my phone call Thursday. Mr. Barth, thank you. Mrs. Hyberger, thank you for texting me back. I'm still wondering where we're at on this moratorium for this summit pipeline. I've been paying real estate taxes since 1977, never been late, always paid in full, and I would sure like you folks to take into consideration my personal feelings toward my property, I guess. They're going to go through, they want to go through a mile of my property to lay this hazardous pipeline, and I just don't think we're getting anything done here in this county. We're the largest county in South Dakota, but we're the last ones to get on board with setting some setbacks or some depth or something, so we got some protection when they want to come through with this. So, I don't know, I've been told, Mrs. Hyberger, that you kind of set the agenda, and it's not on the agenda, just kind of wondering if that's something coming in the future or where your stance is on this. So, just a little upset that I pay my taxes and I got to come here, I should be at home doing some work, but I'm here to take care of my property because I don't see you folks standing up for me right now. Maybe down the line you will be, but right now I don't see it, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak for public comment? Okay, not seeing any. We're going to move on to regular business. I'm going to start out before reading item number 10 and just let you know that when this was heard, I think about two or three weeks ago, I was out and I was sick. And now today, we scheduled this meeting with the thought that we would have five commissioners. We are again short one commissioner today. Commissioner Benega had a medical emergency up in Minneapolis that he was unable to attend today. It's not him, he's fine. And so with that, we will try to proceed and we will see where this agenda item goes. So, item number 10 is consider a contract for professional services from Charles D. Smith, Architecture and Planning for Analysis of the Current and Future Needs of the, excuse me, William H. Lyons Fairground. Carol Mueller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. For your consideration is attached a proposed contract for the analysis of current and future needs of the fairgrounds. The proposed contract, I'll just point out the four different components that are in here, a physical master planning, a site, civil engineering, and selected building analysis and cost estimating, and then the market demand analysis, economic analysis, and economic impact study that would be done, which I know you guys have had a lot of discussion and interest in doing. So, I believe Mr. Smith is probably on Zoom if you have any questions for him at all today. Otherwise, I would turn it over to you for your discussion and direction.
All right, thank you. So that's where we are. I have listened to what you guys talked about a few weeks ago, I've listened to it about once and a half time, I picked select spots out and listened again, and so I guess we would start the conversation. Do you want to hear from Charlie first, or would you, where do you want to pick up at?
Or what?
Pardon me?
What was the option? Hear from Charlie.
Or where did you want, talk to Charlie first, or where do you want to pick up at? Excuse me.
You know, I'm okay with hearing from Mr. Smith. I know that there's members of the task force here that would also like to speak to this agenda item, so whichever way we go first, I'm okay with. Mr. Smith would be fine.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you want to start us off, please?
Sure, I'll give you a brief overview of the proposal and the work scope, which is really a well-established process we've used over the years, probably over 35 years. It includes meetings with the task force, staff, commissioners, user groups, and then quite a bit of outreach to the community and the stakeholders and the users of the facilities. In addition, it will include utility studies by a local firm, Stockwell, and also building analysis and cost estimating for renovations and replacements and whatever the plan comes up with at that point. We'll be developing some alternative concepts for review by commission and selection of a final concept. This time, however, I'd like to introduce Joel Feldman, who is the lead economic consultant with CSL, which is an international firm, Conventions Sports and Leisure, that we've worked on about 35 projects with, and he'll talk a little bit about the economic analysis and economic impact portion of the master plan.
Thank you, Charlie, and good morning, Council. Again, my name is Joel Feldman with Conventions Sports and Leisure International. CSL has been around for about 30 years, I've been with the company for 15 years. We specialize in working with communities that are looking to invest into some sort of a public assembly facility, work with the communities to understand the market opportunity and the demand for the type of facility that is considered, and I specialize in working with communities, looking at fairgrounds and multipurpose event facilities to understand the right type and space, the right amount of space, and understanding the utilization not only for the annual fair or large annual singular events, but the other 350 days out of the year in which the facility is operating to make sure that it is providing the return on investment and the economic benefit intended for the community, as well as the quality of life and other enhancements for the community. As Charlie outlined, we have a very well-defined process that we have developed over 30 years of operations at CSL, in which we will reach out to a variety of different current, past, and potentially new stakeholders, take a look at the local community to ensure that any investment into the project is not duplicating efforts with other public assembly facilities in the market, that would be ensuring that we are generating new economic benefit to the community and not just relocating that activity, taking a look at similar venues throughout the country to learn important operational and event-style lessons, and then reaching out to potential new user groups to understand from that standpoint what would be needed in order to be able to attract events throughout the year. We then have a proprietary model that would take a look both at the costs and benefits associated with investing, in reinvesting in the fairgrounds complex, to provide you the information that you need to make an informed business decision, and to help Charlie and the rest of the project team with the overall master planning process. Thank you for your time, and happy to answer any questions about our processes that we get.
Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Are there any specific questions for Mr. Feldman at this point? Otherwise, we will continue to listen to input. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda item?
Good morning, I'm Bob Timian, I'm a task force member. My address is 2404 Carriage Court, Sioux Falls, 57108. As we look at this, the item comes up about investing and reinvesting. The number this morning that I heard was 31 million from the study 20 years ago. In our two days that our task force has been together, that we've had a chance to meet, there's been discussions about new buildings that are there and don't have a cost estimate, but my guess is that we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 40 million dollars as far as replacing some of the aging facilities that are there. And I think that it would be helpful for the task force to get guidance from you as to what your appetite is for expenditures, that I think we can come up with a great plan. I've got no doubt that Mr. Smith and his organization come up with it, but if we come back to you and say it's got a $40 million price tag, what is your appetite for that one? But if your appetite is more in the $4 million range, then I think we need to change how we look at things as to what is there and how it can go. And from that, from Mr. Meyer on his presentation on Knife River, that that kind of changes my view as to what is there, that there may be more options, but I think even absent that, I would go back to it and say, what is the appetite for that? I was also involved on your capital needs task force, and I will, extremely impressed with the work you did on that, looking at what was there for available cash, how it could work, what was needed, and everything else. An amazing job. What I don't want to do here is to have us go through this effort and come up with it and say, we can come up with a report that is at 38 or 32 million, and if it is the same process that happened 20 years ago, saying, well, there's no funding for it, how are we going to do it? I think it should change the scope of that, and that would really help the task force if we could get some front-end guidance from you as far as your appetite for expenditures at the fairground. I will tell you that the tours that were done were done extremely well. I think the people there have a very good handle as far as condition, what is needed, and everything else. To me, the surprise was that I have always heard from people in the community that the concert grandstands were in need of repair, and I said, no, those are in great shape, they're solid, everything is there. It could work better as far as house stages and some of the other items, but that is there. But some of the other buildings there are aging and in need of repair, and if we want to do the, if some of the events that would be there would be putting up a new facility, but to come to you and say, we can put up a new facility for, and the price is in that rate, in that high range, that 20 to 40 million, what is the appetite of Minnehaha County for that? Or is there, is your expectation that the task force will find a funding mechanism to provide for that? But I just think some guidance would be helpful because I think the scope of the contract, and then if we look at some other options that are there, it just seems that it's early that our task force hasn't had, we just had the two meetings as the introduction, and really haven't met since then. So, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the rest of the task force, this is just me as a task force member, but I want to make sure that Minnehaha County is prudent in how it is spending its money, and I've no doubt that Mr. Smith can do a great job, but is that really, when he talks about architecture and needs and meeting facilities, that is going to be a large dollar number, and is there appetite for that is really the question that I have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all that you do for Minnehaha County.
Thanks, Bob. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Craig Lloyd with Lloyd Companies in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. You know, I got here in 1972, and I think over the 50 years, I've heard the fair being brought up at least 10 to 12 times, and I've heard that we, as a county, we don't have money to put in the fair anymore, so the fair needs to be on its own. We don't know what's going to happen with the fair, and I think I heard that the fairgrounds is over 100 years old, and our forefathers did a good job, but that fairground was out in the country then, and today it's become the center of the city. And when you got the center of the city, you have traffic problems that we haven't even started to address because we're growing. We're growing 7,000, 8,000 people a year, and the state's growing, more and more people want to come to the Sioux Falls, to the fair. And I think to have a study and not to study the whole process and look into the future of Minnehaha County and that fair is a mistake. You should look at the Knife River proposal. What they're looking at, $65 million, a lot of money. If the estimate 20 years ago was 32 million, knowing a little bit about construction, you can just say about every seven years that doubles. And there's other ways to go around it, you know? Architects and engineering estimates sometimes are high and sometimes they're low, but if you don't have the appetite, like Bob was saying, for 45 to 50 million dollars, I think you're wasting your time in doing any studies. I think as far as that fairground goes, I think it needs to be reevaluated. We should look at the Knife River proposal, that should be part of the study. A little bit on a personal note, and probably a selfish note, is that a group of us have invested over a billion dollars in downtown, and if Knife River doesn't find a source in the west side of Sioux Falls, that they have to bring in materials in the next 100 years because estimates are that that's a 100-year solution underneath the fairgrounds. All those trains are going to come through downtown. And right now, we're owner of the Hilton Garden Inn downtown, and we give away about two to three rooms a month because of the train noise. And if that train noise goes from what it is today to eight to 10 more trains a day, it's going to affect the economic development of the downtown and the billions of dollars that we, as private citizens, are investing, which is also future taxes for this county. So I think you need to look at the whole process, and I think you need to look at everything, and look 100 years in the future, not we're going to patch this thing together, try to figure it out, and then move on, and that'll take care of us for another 20 years. Your forefathers want 100 years, you got to go 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment on this subject?
Good morning. Leah Anderson, I live here in Sioux Falls. I'm representing, I didn't know I was going to speak on this today, so timing was great because I was here, and I represent a nonprofit rodeo bible camp. We've used the fairground facilities every year since, boy, like 2004. Two years ago, our fees increased by double. We used to pay about $7,000 a year for using the facility, and now it's $14,000. It's just about made it where we can't have camp anymore without doubling the fees for the kids to come. So, short thing here, I just want to encourage you to consider the offer from the gentleman from Knife River because I agree, that's a lot of money that you're being offered for that property, and the fair could be relocated, the fairgrounds, and it would be very advantageous to the equestrian people that use the facility. I've been out there since 1996 showing horses and riding, so I think relocating is a great idea if the offer is considerable like it is, so, thank you.
Any additional comments on this agenda item? Okay. I don't see anybody else moving, so let's go to the commission and comments. Commissioner Bender?
So I appreciate the people who are here today, particularly appreciate the people who volunteer to be on the task force, who voluntarily volunteer to help. New facility? I'm sorry, user error there. Anyway, I really appreciate the folks that came today to speak on this topic, and appreciate particularly the folks that are serving on this task force, and I would take some ownership. I think that maybe we haven't been as clear about the role of the task force as maybe we could have been. And I would agree with Mr. Lloyd that this is a complicated issue that has been discussed multiple times because it's difficult. If it was easy, we would have taken care of it by now, and that was part of setting forth the task force, is to try to get some help on this. I would disagree fairly strongly with Mr. Myers about the ease that we have about selling this property. I think his company, which is a very large company, has spent lots of legal fees trying to create a clear legal path for the county to sell this property, and we do not have a clear legal path to sell this property. I think if anything is clear, is that that path is not clear. That was a gift, that land was a gift to the county, and that gift is very tightly constrained, and that the risk is if we sell that property, that that property would go back to the heirs and the county would get nothing for it. And so there are very significant legal impediments, which is why it hasn't been done in the past. So people need to understand that. I think Mr. Myers made a very good tactical move by providing this offer at the last minute. They've been looking, they've been expressing lots and lots of interest in this property for a long time. They know, they've actually tried to do a master plan, they've tried to come up with another location, and they have recognized that it's not easy and it's very expensive. Even if we could do it, moving that facility to another location is very, very expensive. His offer, if you look at it carefully, is only $15,000 down.
Million.
$15 million down, and then money paid over time is as material as mined, which is how that land is typically sold, I understand that, but so it's not like he's giving us a lot of cash, and we can't just sell it on a contract, we can't pick one person and sell it. There's, the statutes lay out very specific ways that counties can sell property, and you can't just take a contract from somebody. Now that gets back to the whole issue of the task force. My goal particularly, and I think if you talked to the commissioners, you would have heard maybe different goals for the task force, my goal for the task force was to get a whole bunch of stakeholders together, give them some information about the economic benefit, whether that property as located is a viable location for a fair. I think Charlie's presentation after the two-day was that the location is actually excellent for a fair, given the fact that it's located so close to two interstates. If there is anything that came out of those initial two days, that's what I heard, that the actual location is excellent for that kind of facility. I also was a little taken aback by the amount that the next chunk of this contract would cost us. What I would like to see us do is simply approve the market demand analysis, economic analysis, and economic impact portion, at least first, for that contract, have that information, have the task force be interviewed as part of gathering that information, and then that information go to the task force, have the task force analyze that, see what else they might need, and then have the task force prepare for us, for the commission, a list of priorities, that this, you know, this investment in this building would be where you should focus, that's where you're going to get the biggest impact, and then also- And then also that we could use that information to perhaps go out to donors that might want to invest heavily or adopt a particular facility out there. I mean, it is clear, there's never been any mistake about the fact, this was a gift to the county, but the county has no revenue source, zero revenue source, to maintain the fairgrounds. The taxes that are generated by folks who come into the fairgrounds don't go to the county. They go to the city, they go elsewhere. And so, that is our, that is the crux of the issue for the county, and that's what makes it so difficult. I mean, it is a facility, lots of people go there and utilize it, but it's, the way it's set up is very difficult. And so, I would like to see the next step be that we approve the economic demand and analysis phase, that that go to the task force, that we rely heavily on the task force, both in gathering that information, calling through that information, and preparing a list of priorities for the commission so that we can look to how to best utilize the facility that we have.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender. Additional comments?
I'm sure. I'm happy to talk. There are a lot of issues with this, and Commissioner Bender outlined some of them. We cannot just pick a person to sell it to. We have to declare its surplus, we have to go through certain procedures to try to sell it. And all of that is very cumbersome. I don't favor selling the fair. I do favor us doing a better job with the task force to find out what alternatives there are. As long as I can remember, I've been lobbied on selling the fairgrounds. I remember having lunch with Pat Sweetman back in, I don't know, it must have been 2011 or something. And he pointed out that they could park their railroad cars blocking the streets of Sioux Falls at their whim. You know, it's sort of, you know, a threat. But it's, we do need rock for building, and we do need progress on, you know, Minneapolis built over all of their, built houses all over their aggregate deposits, and they have to import rock from distant places. Now, this isn't aggregate, but I just point out that it's a constant issue. I don't know that this will be a fairgrounds in 100 years. It might be. And I just want to make it a fairgrounds till I leave office.
Jeff's leaving office in December. Commissioner Karsky.
Interesting conversation. I know it's been going on for literally decades now about the fairgrounds. If you ever want to bankrupt somebody, give them a white elephant. And to some extent, the fairgrounds is our white elephant because, as Commissioner Bender says, we have something we have to take care of, but we have no way of revenue source to do that. I do agree with Commissioner Bender that the complex, complexity of the revisionary title and the deed on the property is cumbersome and complex. But it is something that probably needs to be looked at and put to bed because it has been discussed, and we've heard about it. And it could go either way, and it's really going to truly be up to a court of law if we ever want to sell the property. I'm not here in favor of selling the fairgrounds. I'm not here against selling the fairgrounds. We did a resolution back in January that says that we want to have a task force that looks at the best, meet the needs of the community and the intent of the lion's gift. Winona Lyons is basically the T. Denny Sanford of the 1930s. She gave a lot to this community, and we have to respect her legacy and what she wanted. Now, would she want the fairgrounds to stay where it is if it could be moved and be a better legacy to what she wanted for her family? I don't know. She's not here to tell us that. But it's something that I think our task force could look at. Because we've asked them, and this is from the resolution, willing to invest time into the important strategic planning process related to the fairgrounds, including a review of existing facilities, financials, events, and the last word is opportunities. What are our opportunities? We do have an opportunity. I don't think that we can just say, well, we can't do that because we know we might be able to. But we don't know that. The only one that can decide that is a court of law. So, when we take a look at our opportunities, or what we ask the task force to do is look at the opportunities, we do have opportunities, and it's not just leaving things the way they are and building on to them. I'm also very happy that Commissioner Heiburger brought up the discussion of restricting the scope of the contract to the financial part of what we're looking at, the economic impact, and doing the study based on that. Because that's what I was going to bring up. In fact, I had mentioned it to several people, that I was going to do the same thing. So I think that would be the proper course to follow. Let's look at the economics. Let's give our task force more guidance. This contract is for 185,000, I believe, 165,000 plus 15% plus actual expenses related to the agreement. So, I mean, we're probably 165 in expenses. We could be pushing 200,000 with this contract. We don't need everything that's in this contract right now. I think we need to piecemeal it, and I think we need to do the economic impact study. And I think part of that is, you know, what, how much money are we willing to put into it? What are we expecting back for that money? Or what, you know, what would the taxpayers benefit for or from with this project? So, thank you.
Did you have another comment, Commissioner Bender?
I don't know that I necessarily have another comment. I mean, we've spent a lot of time talking about the resolution that we drafted, and there, you know, words can be interpreted ways. I think that the resolution specifically said that we seek to honor the wishes of Winona Axte Lyons, and I do think that that is what we are all here to do. I think, at this point, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Can I make some comments?
Oh, absolutely.
I just wasn't sure if you had an additional comment, and that, and I agree with what's been set up here. There's been a lot of good comments, and if you haven't read the real resolution, parts of it have been read to you. And I would also jump on the part that Commissioner Karsky just read, review of existing facilities, which they have done. Now it is time to look at those financials, advance and additional opportunities. And you're right, I think that there's different ways of interpreting what opportunities mean. In South Dakota codified law 6-13-1, since Clerk Ed also mentioned about them, it says disposal of surplus, we need to determine that it is no longer necessary, useful, or suitable for the purpose that it was required. At this point, we haven't done that until we've done an economic study, a marketing study, and we were using our task force that we put in place. I don't feel like our task force has been ineffective. We've only had two meetings thus far, and it was the start, and they did go through the facilities. I also think it's a little interesting that the task force has been reaching out to everyone but the chairman. I haven't had one single phone call or one single person tell me they're really worried about this direction that it's going. I agree, there's more that we need to do. There's still thoughts running around, and I think everybody up here has ideas about making sure that we're using that task force. That's why we put it together. It took us a lot of time to read those applications, and those people put those applications together because they're interested in what the fairgrounds is. The only way we can sell it is one, as everybody said, there is a whole legal issue behind this. We are trying to make sure that we are honoring Mrs. Lyons's wishes. And there's a whole lot of things in those contracts about how we can't sell it. I would also say, if it ever got to that point, we could sell it. It has to either be a sealed build, bid, a realtor, or an auction. So Knife River's offer to us is really not worth the paper it's written on because we can't even consider it. Does it sound like a lot of money? Yeah, but I don't know that 65 million, which is, or 64, which is actually 15, is going to build us a new fairgrounds today. And still, you come down to the question, and it's, where's the money coming from? I think it comes back to, as Commissioner Bender, everybody said, we don't have the money in Minnehaw County to do a huge renovation of that property. But there are people in this community that believe in the fairgrounds, and they will figure out where it should be and how it should be built. We've got people telling us that they're willing to invest money if we come up with a decent plan. I don't think we're ready to look at a master plan yet because we haven't even figured out if it's feasible at this point. This needs to be a step-by-step procedure and figure out how to do it. I am in favor of doing an economic and marketing study. And the reason we put this all together is that we could look at all options. We're not even to the point that we would say, oh, do we need to look at a court case to see if this is even feasible to sell? We're not even close to that. We need to look and see what it is. The city of Sioux Falls and the surrounding communities benefit from that fairgrounds, and the location is that. They're the ones that are getting the tax revenue, not us. We collect taxes out there on everything that happens, and it all goes, turns over to the cities and the municipalities and the state, not us. We have tried to get that rectified and said, why can't we get some of that tax revenue for our fairs? Well, that's not the way it is. So I would say, I think we just need to move forward with a part of this contract. As you know, we don't have Commissioner Benega here, and I think that after we've got this part completed, we can go on and see if we need to go on to a next step. I think we will continue to work to, how do we want our task force to be more involved? But they need to be extremely involved in this market analysis and this economic part. That is very important, and that is a part of our resolution. So now I'll be quiet because I could go on and on. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I think, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, from what I heard, that we think that the economic impact part of this is best. I think we're going to need to defer this, then, to give Mr. Smith an opportunity to revise the contract and just, for just that part, which he has broken out, a cost of $65,000, and then we can bring it back for approval.
Okay. And I would suggest that we don't set a specific date for bringing it back at this point, only because I'm on jury duty for this month, and I got excused today for this specific meeting and our budget hearings that are coming up. And so I would request we do not put a date on that, through the conversation, in that we can work it around when all four of us, five of us, will be here, and I won't be on jury duty. So, if you would just make a motion to refer.
I would make a motion to defer until we have an opportunity to review a revised contract that just provides the market demand analysis, economic analysis, and economic impact.
Okay.
Second, whatever she said.
I have a motion in a second.
I would just make a comment that the rock isn't going anywhere. So we don't need to rush into doing anything. And I don't believe the fair is going anywhere either. So, anyway, we can keep.
Let's get it right. Let's get it right, one step at a time. I have a motion in a second. I'm not going to read it back. I think we should do a recall vote, please.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karsky?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. To be determined as a date. With that, we'll move on to item number 11, which is the primary election recap. Auditor Kite.
Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So just wanted to give you a recap of the primary election that we held on June 7th. You know, go throw some of the numbers, but, you know, talk about some of the issues and successes we had from the primary. So we had a total of 34,360 votes that were cast out of the 127,161 registered voters at that time, so about 27% turnout. We had a total of 73 races. That included national and state races, countywide races, party precinct and amendment C. So, a large number of races that we had to account for. Provisional ballots, we received 29 provisional ballots, of which 18 were able to be validated. And then we also had a one recount for District 12, South Dakota House Representatives. We completed that recount on June 27th, and happy to say that we had no change of results. So, kind of a mini audit, I guess you might call it, of our election counting process verified that the results were as we had originally reported. So then I'll talk about some of the issues that we had on our election, and maybe some of the successes that we had also. So we had some pre-election issues. One, I guess I'll just note, you know, just the limited Auditor's Office election experience. Majority of the staff that I have have never been through an election before, so we all had to come up the learning curve on this pretty quickly. We had some ballot issues with our printer. They had printed some ballots incorrectly at one point. We had that reprinted, that just kind of lingered on throughout the process, but we finally able to work through that. And then just the challenge of getting election workers, you know, something that I wasn't familiar with. But, you know, we had a number of election workers that had to fall out because of COVID or other illnesses. And then just, you know, trying to get the number of election workers on Election Day, that was just a, you know, a struggle. And then just, it seemed like on a daily basis throughout the primary period, we just had, there was always a challenge. It was presented to us each day that we had to work through, and it was just an interesting process. And then on the Election Day, we did have a couple of issues I just note. You know, we had some incorrect ballots that were given to voters. This occurred really in some of those precincts that included more than one legislative district. Minnehaw County has 19 precincts that include more than one legislative district. This is caused by the timing of the redistricting process. It really didn't allow the Auditor's Office to redraw the precinct boundaries to be consistent with new district lines. That created a challenge for us. Unfortunately, we just, you know, the timing when that was released just didn't allow us to redraw those lines. You know, during election worker training, we focused on the different ballot styles that would be available, and how to identify and provide those correct ballots. Fortunately, even with that focused training, some of the workers gave the wrong ballots to some workers. You know, we're going to focus on that in greater depth in the November election. Not all the precincts provided incorrect ballots. We were aware of nine of the 19 that did hand out wrong ballots, but, you know, so about half of them were able to, you know, work that process correctly. You know, and then it was just, that process is complicated in the primary when you have, you know, a Democrat, a ballot, a Republican ballot, and a nonpartisan ballot. So, that just created another level of complexity. But, you know, in, just in general, the Auditor's Office understands the importance of every vote, and we really feel badly that even one voter may have been given the incorrect ballot. We've identified possible changes for training and processes for the next election to mitigate the issue from repeating itself. And then we had, we did have a situation in that we ran out of, or ran low on these, on some ballots. We had, we had to replenish ballots in three different precincts on Election Day. We planned for, when we ordered ballots, we planned for a turnout of 20, 30% greater than a normal primary turnout. We ordered ballots based on previous turnout percentages at specific precincts. You know, so like I said, I had three precincts that I had to replenish ballots. Valley Springs precinct was the most challenging. It was a higher-than-planned turnout. It got, for whatever reason, it had just a much higher turnout than we would expect. Tried to get ballots out there as soon as we could, just, so some voters had to wait for ballots, but tried to mitigate those situations in the future. You know, the Auditor's Office obviously will order ballots expecting a much higher turnout in November, and just make sure that we don't have that shortage again. We did have some successes, I thought, on the, in the primary, some of the changes that we made. One of them, I call it, is, you know, we delivered our election equipment to the polling locations the day before the election. This enhancement involved the use of county highway staff delivering polling locations out the city, outside the city limits, and rental of some vans to use to deliver polling locations within the city limits that were staffed primarily with the Equalization Department employees. The use of the county staff resulted in a much more productive delivery versus the previous method. So, we have, I guess, just. So we have, I guess, just kind of explain all that. So we have to deliver all these supplies out to the precincts, right? And before, the previous process was, they started about a month before, and they would start delivering things like the express voting machines and other supplies. The precincts really didn't appreciate having to hold on to that election equipment for that long, so it kind of worked, you know, kind of saw how the city had done theirs and kind of leveraged that process, worked with our highway department, and were able to get that election material delivered the day before, which the precinct locations really appreciate. And then we just pick about the day after the election. That was, I thought, a success, especially using the county staff, which was very good. Another change we made was writing absentee ballot signatures. So we have to verify the signatures of the day or when they come in. Statute allows us to verify those signatures when they're received in the Auditor's Office. I think previously they wait for Election Day to verify those signatures. This change allowed for the county and the absentee ballots to begin early in the day, so it kind of sped up that ability to count those absentee ballots. And it got a lot of positive comments from people who worked the absentee ballot process that thought that was a big improvement. You know, I think, you know, I mentioned earlier, we had a lack of experience in our Auditor's Office, but at the same time, I think, I want my successes, I would count as just Auditor's staff ability to understand the election process. They really dug into it and worked hard to make sure they understood what the process, how it worked. We used, you know, additional part-time staff to handle the increased in-person volumes and voter registrations. I think that was, you know, we were pretty aggressive in making sure we had staff there. We made a change how we printed ballots. Before, we would print ballots by style versus by precinct. We start printing them by precinct, and I think that allowed us to better manage the ballots. And then, you know, we used the commission chambers for tabulating the votes. This allowed for a controlled space while allowing public viewing the process. I think that just worked out very well, so I appreciate the commission's flexibility in allowing us to use that space. I think that was a big win. And then we use the other space in the, on the second floor, the admin building, for the absentee ballots. I think, you know, in past years, you know, absentee ballot might have been taking place in the Auditor's Office with just the number of people we have voting absentee anymore. We just need a dedicated space. That space worked out very well, and I think the citizens were better served by that. So that's kind of my summary of the primary election. Had some wins, had some losses, but, you know, hopefully we're better prepared for our November general election. You have any questions?
Thanks, Ben. Any questions for Ben? Commissioner Karski.
Ben, thank you for what you've done for the Auditor's Office. Big thank you to the people that work on Election Day. We just, you can't get it done without them. You know, going back to the work that you've done, you're planning, and I have a degree in logistics management, and I just understand all the different plates you have spinning and all the things you've got going on, and you're doing it under the microscope of everybody looking over your shoulder. I think you did a fantastic job. Going back to the workers, how many people do you have to recruit to work that one day?
We have to organize somewhere, getting close to about four hundred different workers.
How do you find these people?
A lot of it is from the list of people who've worked before and word-of-mouth, you know, some advertising. But, yeah, it's a, it's a lot of phone calls, right? And, and just filling in holes.
Okay. And their training involves what?
Yeah, so if you're a poll worker, we have an hour-and-a-half training session that we put on about two weeks before the election, go through it in detail. We give them a copy of that training material. You know, I said, if they're, if they're previous workers, so it's kind of a refresher for them, but that's the crux to that training, yeah.
And they're human. They make mistakes. I mean, nobody I don't think expects anything perfect. If you do, you probably should adjust your expectations. How long do they work on that Election Day? Is it like seven to seven?
Yeah, so it's a twelve-plus-hour day, so they're probably there even some early, six o'clock to set it, set up, and by the time they're done, it's probably eight o'clock. So it's a, yeah.
And we pay them a lot of money, too.
Yes. You know, each election worker gets a hundred and fifty dollars a day, unless you're a superintendent, you get a hundred and eighty. But, yes, they do it more for, as a service to the community than they do for the money.
Heartfelt appreciation to them and for what they do. You couldn't get it done, and, you know, to make the election move forward, we, we need them, and I just encourage other people that have the time and the desire to do it to volunteer to do this, because it is volunteering.
Yeah. You know, right, Commissioner. My hats go off to all those people who work for us. They do a great job. We shouldn't expect perfection from them. They try to do the best they can. We try to train them as best we can, but, yeah, they do a very good job.
We don't expect perfection, but we do have checks and balances to catch the mistakes and to fix the things as we go along. So again, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Comments? Commissioner Bender?
Well, mainly I'd like to echo a lot of what Commissioner Karski said. Oh, now I'm on. But I would also just like to point out, one thing that I have learned as a commissioner is how incredibly complicated the voting process is. You know, I think I was kind of an average citizen that just, kind of like when I put my luggage on a plane, I don't really know how it gets to me when I get to the other end. I'm just glad it does. And I had, I didn't really understand how complex a process it is and how many, as you said, how many volunteers are involved, and it only happens infrequently. So, you know, a restaurant, new restaurant opens, they have a soft opening, they get, you know, a few days to work out the kinks and train their staff. We have to bring these people on, have to give them some training, and then they have a much more complicated task than it appears to the average eye to run through. And it's difficult on a long day like that for people to concentrate. I understand all of that. What was particularly encouraging to me from your report is that you critically looked at the process, you recognized that not everything was done perfectly, and you tried to spend some time thinking and improving processes, so how it can be done better the next time. And I found that particularly encouraging. So I do want to thank all the folks that work that day, thank all the county staff and that was, were able to flex their regular schedules and work collaboratively with you to try to improve the process. So thank you.
Commissioner Barth, any comments?
No, I would also thank our auditor, but having gone through this many times, both as a candidate and a voter, it's extremely complicated once you get into your position. And your predecessor had major problems, and there's always been something. We can use a lot of help to improve the process, but that's just like improving ourselves. That's something that will never end. We have to keep working on it.
I just have a couple.
Thank you.
Sorry. You mentioned the staffing hours, that the people who were getting paid, you know, the volunteer, the volunteers but getting paid. Let's talk about our own staff, because our own staff didn't go home at eight o'clock. They went home at maybe two in the morning.
Yeah, close to two o'clock in the morning, right, before they get done, yes?
Yes. And so our own staff put in way more than ten hours. And I'll also say that, you know, and this is not pointing fingers at anything, anyone, but any errors that were made, which were minimal, were human errors, people who were tired or people who just missed something. And those errors were caught by our accounting machines that said something is off, and you were diligent to figure out where those mistakes were and correct those mistakes quickly. Also, to echo my fellow commissioners is that we do need help, just like being on jury duty, although you can be called on jury duty, you don't get paid much. You don't get paid much to do this. This is a public service. The money you get is just kind of a gratuity for thanks for helping us out. We need people to help with our elections. If you want quick, safe, and effective elections, you need to come and help us, too. So our staff is amazing, most of them, which were fairly new in this process, too. So thank you, Ben. You did an amazing job, and we look forward to another amazing November election. So thanks.
Thank you.
That will move on to item number twelve, which is the first reading and rezoning of number twenty-two Zat dash zero-six. The author is, to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a hearing on July twenty-six, twenty-two, to consider the amendment to the nineteen ninety revised zoning ordinance for the Minnehaw County to rezone from an A-one agricultural district to a RR rural residential district. The legal description described as Lot One, Songbird Acres, sixth addition, in the Northwest One Quarter, Section Thirty-two, Township One-O-Two-North, Range Fifty-West, Benton Township, Kevin. And I would point out that this normally would have been on the consent agenda, and we just missed it, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, good morning, and I'm Kevin Huckman from the Planning Department. Yes, this is a first reading, so this item here is a seven-point-one-four acre property with one residential dwelling on it. The petitioner is requesting to move to rural residential with the draft layout of five lots on the property. The Planning Commission heard this item on June twenty-seventh and recommended denial of the rezoning request, but it still would go to you for the final decision. So action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the hearing, and the hearing to be held on July twenty-six, twenty-two, at nine a.m.
Any questions for Kevin? Look for a motion.
How far is this away from the joint planning district with the city?
From the joint? Probably a little over half a mile, I suppose.
So it is close?
Yeah, it's close. It's about three and a half miles from the city, so.
Okay. Thank you.
On Highway thirty-eight.
Yep. No, I knew it was close. I was just trying to figure out exactly where, so, okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, we had a number of people speak against this. The roads in that subdivision are not up to, you know, having another seven houses, and there's also issues with it all being on septic, on top of the hill, above the creek, and there was just, except for the proponent who was hoping to, you know, prosper from an expansion of housing there, the rest of them were opposed, and we voted against it.
Thank you. I need a motion to move this forward.
I would make a motion to set the second, publish the notice and set the hearing date for July twenty-six, twenty-two.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Department of Social Services and Minnehaw County Jail for Restoration to Competency Program Services. Mr. Walsh? Nope. Mr. Ward.
Good morning, Commissioner. So this is a renewal of last year's contract with DSS for the jail competency restoration. Pretty cut and dry so far. It's been going very well.
Okay. Any questions, otherwise a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
Last week, Commissioner Benega and I were in the Metro Communications. We had a meeting primarily to approve the contract that was negotiated with Metro Communications. I can't give you all the specifics because I'd be shooting from the hip, but that contract was approved. We had an executive session, and a half-hour meeting turned into about an hour and fifteen-minute meeting. So I think things are going well. Things can always go better, but appreciate the employees of Metro Communications and their willingness to negotiate, and I think we have a good contract, and it's just for the one year. It's the third year of a three-year contract, so that will come before us as part of our budget process, so.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Karski?
Yes, we had a citizen today ask about the moratorium, and I guess, not being in leadership, I'm uncertain as to, and for his benefit, when will we have that discussion before the commission again?
We are working on with our legal counsel on that.
Okay, so we don't have a date certain?
No, we do not have a date certain. And like I said, I'm on jury duty this month, but we are working on it with legal counsel.
Okay. Okay. Madam Chair, I would echo Commissioner Karski's question on when are we going to have a hearing on a proposed pipeline, moratorium? You know, we are paid to make decisions, not to wait and decide later. A baseball umpire has to decide in seconds or less, and this has been beating around for a very long time. I'm getting calls, I'm getting emails, I'm getting text messages. I'd like it to be on the agenda ASAP, and, you know, I don't know why, but as a county commissioner, I'm not allowed to put anything on the agenda. Why can't a single commissioner put something on the agenda? You are the one that's holding it up, Cindy.
I would say that I'm not holding it up, Commissioner Barth. We continue to work with legal counsel. It will be on when we are ready for it to move on. We have had numerous hearings on this, and there's been numerous input. And yes, we are getting emails, and there continues to be good information coming. We are not dragging this out by any means, and there has been no action by the PUC. We have time to get this done safely.
Madam Chair, I've tried to put other things on the agenda, too, that affect our county. For example, with the game fishing parks people, I can't get anything on the agenda. Am I a second-class commissioner?
I don't have an answer for you for that. I don't think you're second-class, so. Any other non-action commission discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I would just say that, you know, I read a fun quote the other day.
The what?
A fun quote.
Oh.
And I'm reminded of Harry Truman, who, they said, "Give 'em hell, Harry." He says, "I don't give 'em hell, I just tell the truth, and the Republicans think it's hell." But the quote I saw the other day was, "If you want to make a liberal angry, tell him a lie. If you want to make a conservative angry, tell him that Trump lost." Anyway, just.
Thank you for your comments. Any other non-action commission? Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn, except for, we are going to reconvene into a budget hearing. So I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting to reconvene into a budget hearing. I would give us a five-minute recess. Is that okay, or do you need more than five minutes?
That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reconvene in five minutes for a budget hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.